Our revenues, how much we keep in our bank accounts, and what our expenditures and revenue numbers look like month over month as they come in. So very proud of this team, proud of what they're doing, proud of the way that they're being transparent with the data that they're showing and highlighting the fact that we're staying within the bands of managing the money appropriately. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Leibert.
Do I have motion to approve?
Motion to accept.
Accept, excuse me? I have a motion and a second acceptance. Do I have any comments? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four zero, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jamie. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Item number five, presentations and proclamations. Rachel Holloman from MS from LPC, Director of Suicide Prevention at the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, DBHDD, will deliver a presentation on suicide prevention. We want to thank you for coming. This is a big deal. Rachel's a big wig, if you don't know that, at the state level, and the opportunity to be able to get her to come and speak to us as we look at the issue we have for suicides in our county. I'll let Rachel take care of it, and then I'll talk about some comments afterwards.
All right. Thank you for having me. I appreciate that. If possible, I'd like to start with the opening video from Commissioner Kevin Tanner from the Department of Behavioral Health.
Hello, I'm Kevin Tanner, Commissioner of the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. I want to thank the Spalding County Board of Commissioners for inviting our state's Suicide Prevention Director, Rachel Holloman, to speak with you today. This is such an important conversation. In the past five years, Spalding County has lost 59 residents to suicide, a rate higher than the state average. Most of these lives were lost to firearms, and we know many more residents have struggled with self-harm or crisis. Spalding also ranks among the top 10 counties in Georgia for crisis episodes reported through 988. These are not just statistics. They represent families, neighbors, and friends. Your leadership in prevention sends a clear message of hope to this community. And as we move forward, I ask for your help in spreading the word about 988, Georgia's Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. It's available 24/7 by call, text, or chat, and connects people with trained counselors right here in our state. The more people know about 988, the more lives we can save. Thank you for your partnership and commitment to a healthier, safer future for Spalding County.
So, thank you, and thank you to our Commissioner for that. I'm very honored to be here to talk to you today. I apologize. They told me I had to speak into the microphone, but I also like to see who I'm talking to. So, September is Suicide Prevention Month, and so I tend to spend the time traveling all the way across our state, but across multiple states, talking about suicide prevention. And I happened to have a conversation and receive a call from Chairman Davis, who asked me to come and speak to you about Spalding County and what you look like. Would it be possible for us to go to the next slide, please? So, we pulled some data to kind of show you what it looks like in Spalding County. So, between 2020 and 2024, as the Commissioner stated, there were 59 suicide deaths in Spalding County. Last year, you averaged about roughly 10 suicide deaths. I was meeting with your county manager and Chairman Davis prior to this, and unfortunately, Spalding County this year alone, up to date, has reported 53 suicide deaths just in 2025, which is very significant. I would tell you, one death is one too many, which is why we're going to talk a lot about what it means as a leader in your county to normalize the conversation, to talk about suicide, to make sure that people are aware of 988 and what that means. Spalding County historically, over the past four years, has ranked higher than the Georgia average in regards to suicide. And unfortunately, in 2025, you're trending that way again. Next slide, please. As the Commissioner mentioned, the majority of means involve firearms. However, hanging and some type of suffocation is right close to behind that. Next, please. We gave you some demographics of what it looks like. The highest number of deaths reported among your county are ages 30 to 39 and 50 to 59. What I am going to caution you is that, across the board in the state of Georgia, we're seeing a significant rise in our youth. Suicide has been the second cause of death in Georgia for children ages 10 to 14, and it's projected to potentially become the number-one cause in the state of Georgia. So, talking to our kids, talking to our youth, having those conversations are very, very important as we move forward, raising awareness. Next slide, please. So, this shows you kind of what it looks like in regards to non-fatal data. 484 emergency room visits and hospital discharges were related to intentional self-harm, which includes suicide attempts. And that's in the past four years. Again, the official data for 2025 has not been released yet because we're obviously not through with that yet. One of the things we did note is that, unfortunately for Spalding County, you are higher in regards to a mental health provider ratio. Georgia, unfortunately, is in a mental health provider shortage. The United States averages one mental health provider to 300 individuals. Georgia is one in 520. Spalding County is one in 590, according to our information, which is one of the reasons I'm really going to stress to you the importance of 988, understanding how to utilize 988, how to tell people about 988, talking about 988. I give speeches all over the state. I come from a rural area. I may work out of the Capitol, but that doesn't mean I live there. I'm a farm girl. My nearest neighbor is a mile away from me, which is kind of how I like it, so I just visit Atlanta when the Commissioner or the Governor calls me up there. So, I understand what it's like to not have necessarily the resources always at your fingertips, and that's the importance of really talking about 988 and what that means. One of the things that we have really talked about in suicide prevention for the month is September, is really sharing hope. What does that mean? How do you share hope? How do you prevent suicide? Those are questions I get asked all the time. If the numbers are like this, I'm not a mental health clinician. I wasn't trained to do this. What do I do? And what I can tell you is the simplest thing you can do is show somebody you care. To help reduce the stigma against suicide is to talk about suicide. The number-one myth in suicide prevention is that if you talk about suicide, you're going to put it in somebody's hip. All of our research, all of our data, I've been a clinician for 25 years. It's not, that's not the way it works. Actually, what happens is if you ask somebody the question, if you talk to somebody about suicide, you immediately decrease the likelihood that they will attempt suicide that day, just because you're having the conversation, just because you're showing somebody that you care, just because you're saying, hey, you know, it's okay to not be okay. It's okay to struggle. I'm here if you want to talk. If I don't know what to say, I can call 988, and I'll stay here with you and help get you connected to someone. We can take it from there. 988 calls in Georgia are answered in Georgia. We have one of the highest rates in the nation for answering our own calls because we have a very robust crisis system in the state of Georgia, and we've worked really hard to make 988 what it is in the state of Georgia. And, you know, one of the, I work a lot with teens. We just had a big teen summit. We brought over 250 youth from across the state of Georgia together. And one of the things that we always tell them, and one of the hashtags that I've had to learn how all that works as we've navigated this process, is that hope changes everything. All you need is that little bit of light. All you need is that hope, and that you can be that hope for someone. On that note, Chairman Davis, I would like to present you with one of our September Suicide Permission Hope T-shirts. It has "Hope" on it, "Hope," period, because that's what the kids say, as well as the 988 Crisis Line, because of all your work sharing hope in your community. Okay. And then, of course, we're going to present y'all with this bag of 988 goodies to make sure that you have all the 988 materials, at least a start, as well as ways to access it as we move forward. Chairman, did I cover everything you wanted me to cover?
Yes, you did. Let me cover a couple of things to make sure. She's a pretty sophisticated talker, and some of it is, I want to make sure we all heard. If you don't know what you're doing, if you get into something, get them to talk on 988. You don't have to be great, but you have to get a phone out, get them to talk. 988 will take care of them. If somebody's in crisis, right there. A simple phone call, a simple checking on somebody is the difference in a lot of lives. If you're around and you see somebody, take the extra few minutes to just check and see how they are. Now, we've got 53. We're, right now, every week, we're having somebody commit suicide. If we didn't have another one the whole year, I want you to think through that. We had an issue recently with, out at Skipstone. Luckily for us, the child that was out there had already written a note and went in, as I understand, to load the weapon and to kill himself. And as he was loading the weapon, he discharged it, and the rest of the staff was able to come in there. This is a small, faith-based school that the teachers thought they knew everybody in there, and they didn't realize that this child was in such damage, needed help. Just a few minutes to take the time to be able to do it. Now, let me talk about how we do things and how it happens. About a month ago, we started really seeing the data. Now, in our county, there isn't any, at the young age, at the old age. It is all mixed. Is it male/female? Not in our county right now. Is it black/white? Not in our county right now. Is it some kind of poverty versus rich person? Not in our county right now. This is happening to 53 people in our county that are just like the demographics in our county. We've got to do something about it. Leaders, people, talk to your coworkers, talk to your families, talk to people to be able to get it. First thing I would suggest, if I was as good as Rachel, I wouldn't have to do this. But the first thing is keep the conversation going however you can. Get it started. Get your phone. Get 988 if you don't know what to do. Sitting down and listening to somebody is the best thing you can do to write off, to get it done. So, do I have, does any of the Commissioners have questions for Ms. Rachel? Okay. Why don't we get a picture with Ms. Rachel up here? I'll put on my, oh, sure.
Hey, your jacket off first.
Over the jacket. Over the jacket. We're going right up to the front. Get the camera, the camera to, Dr. Burke, she'll take care of everything. Come on, come on up here with us. Am I a part of this meeting? Oh, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
We've got two cameras, so let me get her. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. On three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you so much.
This is really incredible.
Thank you. Yeah.
Picture shop that he's there. Always just a face in the background.
You should stop showing your legs. Some people are very religious about their body parts.
Legs.
Ms. Rachel, I'd like to make sure you pass the word on to Commissioner Tanner. Thank you for allowing you to have the time to come down here and take care of and help us. This is a big issue for us, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, Steve, do we have, we had, do we have this information shared to us?
We do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we can make that available.
Okay.
Is that okay with you? Thank you.
Item number two, Presentation of 30-Year Service Award to Jonathan Helms.
Helms. Regressed.
Mr. Helms is under the weather this evening, and we will move this presentation to the October 6th meeting. I'm sorry for that. Item number three, presentation.
Do we need a motion table? Not really. It's a presentation.
Thank you.
It'll be efficient.
Item number three, Presentation of Valor Award to Sheriff's Deputy and the Spalding County Fire Department. This evening, it is our privilege to recognize heroes among us. I would recognize Sheriff Darryl Dix and Fire Chief Michael Byrd to share more.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is going to be a hard one, but it's also going to be a celebration. We're actually going to, Sheriff Dix and his team has put together some footage of camera, body cam footage, so if you don't know what you're about to watch. We had a very unusual call in which a car went into a lake on August 12th. So, I'm going to go ahead and set this up with, this does have some graphic footage in it. So, most of it is blurred, but if you have small children, whatever you may, or this type of visuals can bother you, you may want to look away. I'm going to just go ahead and let them pay that, then we'll talk.
She might need another lady. She was transporting her friend's toddler. He's still in the car.
She was the driver. She's the one that pulled her.
304, you got any med kit? We've got the baby out. Not yet. We got you. We got you. Holder's here, okay?
Come on, guys. About five more, please.
Okay.
Come on.
Notice a term in that called heroes. Now, in emergency services, whether it be police, fire, EMS, emergency 911, we don't really consider ourselves heroes. We really don't. We're there. We're doing what we're trained to do and doing what we want to do, and that is serve our public. But there were a lot of heroes in place today that made a difference in this young baby's life, between the communications officers that received the call, to one of our citizens who we're going to talk about, who acted selfishly to try to save another citizen, to the fire first responders, to the deputies, to Wellstar EMS, to the flight medics. This all came together in one team effort. As you can see from that video, we couldn't practice that and make that any smoother from being handed off from one to another, one to another, to make a difference. And I think that's a testament to how well we work here. But before I move on to the first responders, and Sheriff Dix and I, we're going to tag-team the awards because police and fire have two different systems of awards. We're going to join one, but we're also going to do some more together. But one of our citizens, as you saw, Ms. Misty Dean, stepped in and went in the water. And I don't know if you realize how dangerous that is to make a difference. So, I'm going to call Ms. Dean if she'll come forward. Sheriff Dix and I would like to acknowledge her and thank her for being a hero. And we have a light blue, which in the fire service is a life-saving award. And we're going to present, for the first time in my career, to a citizen. And Chief Dix, or Sheriff Dix, is going to present this together.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for what you did.
Thank you.
We love you.
So, I'm going to start with the fire service awards. We're going to give one, but I am also going to include a deputy to give them a fire service award as well. The first award I'm going to give is called a Valor Award. Now, Valor means that you stepped above and beyond, and you put your life behind that of another. So, the Valor Award, first one's going to be Lieutenant Jonathan Fetters, who on August 12th, 2025, demonstrated the highest level of Valor by placing his own life at risk to rescue a trapped baby within a submerged car. Lieutenant Fetters swam approximately 90 feet to where the car was submerged and performed a rescue without any diving equipment. As a result, the baby was revived. His actions exemplified bravery, commitment, and service to our citizens. Officer Deputy Gray was with him. We'll talk about him in a second. But Lieutenant Fetters, would you please come forward? Deputy Nathan Gray.
Just one second. For family members and everything, we're going to get a picture at the end to get everybody up here, so you'll have opportunity to be able to get just where you want and take as many pictures as you want.
Deputy Nathan Gray, if you could please come forward. Now, Lieutenant Fetters wasn't alone. Two people swam out. And when you think about a 90-foot swim, that's a long swim. Not only did it swim 90 foot out, they had swam 90 foot back. And working as a team is how they rescued this baby. So, again, Deputy Gray put his life behind that of a fellow citizen. We want to acknowledge him for a Fire Service Valor Award as well. Now, for those who administered CPR from the fire service side, I'm going to give them their life-saving awards, and I'm going to step aside and let Sheriff Dix present his. So, would, now, this is one, is an interesting one because this is the second time in 60 days I've been able to present this person a life-saving award. So, would firefighter William Matheson, please come forward. The award reads, "Who on August 12th, 2025, assisted with resuscitation of a pediatric patient who was apneic and pulseless." That means was not breathing. The patient was revived on scene as a result of his efforts and part of the team efforts. Firefighter Dennis Watley, if you would come forward, please.
It's kind of hard to follow up and make anything any better than what we've seen. There were other deputies that were there as well. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe just about everybody that was there is a parent themselves. So, you can only imagine putting yourself in that situation as a law enforcement officer, as a first responder, as a firefighter, knowing that you're risking your life for somebody else's child or your children in the back of your mind, hoping somebody would do the same thing for them. So, I just want to let you know, we're very proud of you. What was happening is they were going from the water up to the back of the ambulance. It looked like it was going very slow. But in fact, what was happening is Deputy Holder, Deputy Whitmer, Deputy Fuller, as they were running, they were holding the child while they were performing chest compressions. It's kind of hard to run wide open when you're doing that. You've got to do what you've got to do. And I would like to ask Deputy Sam Holder to step up first. Sergeant Jennifer Fuller. Deputy Zach Whitmer.
What are given? Anybody that we left out, I hope. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for being here and honoring these men and these women. We can't say enough to thank you for your involvement.
these women. And we can't say enough to thank you for your involvement. That's a hero. That's fighting a battle for her life while fighting a battle for another person's life. And that is absolutely amazing. You are an amazing young lady. We appreciate it.
Would all of, would all of those who have received the award, please step forward for photographs, please? So many people wonder what they would do in an emergency, wonder if they would step forward. And the minimum of Spalding County, we have examples. We know people who don't have to worry and wonder anymore. They know what they would do.
All of us got flags, things, hey, come on forward. This is center. This is center. All right. Larry, are we all square like we're supposed to be?
We're, you're just blocking everything.
Me?
Yeah.
All right, step up here beside me. We're going to get up here. You've got to sign, then you're going to completely move your fur. Everybody can see.
Yeah.
Come on up.
I taught you well, boy.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, just step right up here. We're going to have a shooting, and you just, they'll move out of their way, and then you get to be centered up, and then take the picture. This is about it.
Anybody who wants a picture, come on up.
All right, Larry, you're first.
All right, everybody look this way. On three, one, two, three.
Little first.
He's proud. He's proud.
All right, you two move out of the way, so the next people can come in there and get the picture taken. Now, take all the time you need. This is all, this is what this is about. This is a community. We do things together. Come on, come on, come on. Get up where you can stand up. Come on. And then you'll raise your hand, so we know you're taking the picture. We'll look at it right at you. recognizes that Chief Burr, who was up here, is the Fire Chief of the Year for Georgia. And Chief Pope is the EMA Director of the Year. So we're...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good God, that would be a wrestling.
We're going to give everybody time to get out and clear before we continue on.
Yeah, she got the driver. And then a sheriff and a fireman jumped in, broke the window, got the baby out, swam it back. Other deputies grabbed it. I mean, they showed a video. It was, it was hard to watch.
Wow.
And you want to pull number two out of consent, right?
Yes, yes. We're not there yet, but yes. Okay. Item number four, recognition of Commissioner Chair Clay Davis.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to read what this recognition is about. It's with great pride and admiration that we recognize Chairman Clay Davis for his outstanding leadership and continued service to Spalding County, the state of Georgia, and our nation. Chairman Davis has recently been appointed to several prestigious committees within the National Association of Counties, including the Finance, Pensions, and Intergovernmental Affairs Steering Committee, the Healthy Counties Innovation Council, the Rule Action Caucus, and the Veterans and Military Services Advisory Council. These appointments reflect his unwavering commitment to fiscal responsibility, rural advocacy, public health innovation, and support for our veterans and military families. In addition to his national service, Chairman Davis serves as Vice Chair of the Revenue and Finance Committee for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, where he helps shape policy that impacts counties across the state. Locally, he continues to lead as Chairman of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, championing initiatives in behavioral mental health, public safety, infrastructure, and community engagement. His dedication extends to health care and human services through his roles on the Wellstar Clinical Partners Board and the Community Service Board, where he advocates for accessible, quality care for all residents. Chairman Davis's leadership is a beacon of integrity in service, and we are honored to celebrate his many contributions. Congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman, for the work that you do that inspires all of us.
We're going to have a picture. Thank you all. That's always an honor. We recognize people who are doing great things, no matter if we do it or not, so we take the time to do that for everybody. Larry, are you got us where you want us?
I'm only got one more one. All right, I'm three, one, two, three.
Item number five, Consider Approval of the Joint Proclamation by the City of Griffin and the Spalding County honoring the recipient of the Exchange Club Man of the Year Award for 2024. The item is presented non-formal recognition and documenting the proclamation issued in honor of the award recipient. At this time, we will read the award. If I could ask the Vice Chair to do that, please?
It would be my honor, Chairman. Joint proclamation by the City of Griffin in Spalding County honoring the Exchange Club Man of the Year for 2024, Lloyd Bohannon. Whereas Lloyd Bohannon is a native of Forsyth, Georgia, where he graduated from Mary Persons High School in 1961. While at Mary Persons, Lloyd played football, basketball, and ran track all four years. During his senior year, Lloyd was co-captain of the football and basketball teams. Lloyd is a member of the Forsyth Monroe County Sports Hall of Fame. After graduating from Mary Persons, Lloyd attended Gordon Military College and graduated from Georgia Southern University in Statesboro in 1966 with a BS in education. And in 1971, Lloyd received his Master's of Education degree from Georgia Military, Georgia College in Millidgeville. And whereas Lloyd's coaching career began at Wilmington, Willingham High School in Macon. And he also coached at Shoals High School in Athens before moving to Griffin in 1978 to become the head football coach and athletic director of the Griffin High School Bears. Under Coach Bohannon's leadership, the Griffin Bears posted a record of 156 wins, 58 losses, and one tie. Griffin won one state championship and five region championships during this time. And whereas Lloyd's 18-year tenure as the head football coach of the Griffin Bears had a major impact on the Griffin and Spalding County community. In 1999, Lloyd was inducted into the Griffin-Spalding Athletics Hall of Fame for his accomplishments as the coach and athletic director at Griffin High School. And whereas Lloyd, like coaches, like other coaches and educators, makes profound differences in the lives of the students they encounter each day. Lloyd made that difference, also often assisting players to reach their goals of playing at the next level. It is also important to note that retirement did not stop Lloyd's servant's heart, and he redirected his God-given talents to other opportunities in our community. And whereas Lloyd and his wife Carol and their children, Brian and Becky, joined First Baptist Church in September of 1979, retirement allowed Lloyd to get more involved in a wide variety of activities at First Baptist, including serving as a deacon and membership on several committees. And whereas Lloyd is a unique and special person that is quietly impactful to young men as a coach and now as a volunteer to provide a helping hand to those that need that help and support. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the Boards of Commissioners of the City of Griffin and Spalding County, do hereby jointly and proudly recognize and pay tribute to Lloyd Bohannon for the many decades of accomplishments and contributions he has made to our citizenry. We, the Boards of Commissioners for the City of Griffin and Spalding County, do have here unto set our hands on this, the 16th day of September in the year of our Lord 2025, for Exchange Club Man of the Year for 2024, Lloyd Bohannon.
Motion to accept.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. The award ceremony will be tomorrow specifically, I think.
I'll be reading that to them, that's right.
There. Item number six, citizen comments.
Mr. Chair, no one has signed up to speak this evening?
I will speed along without having to read through that. Excuse me, I jumped ahead. Minutes, consideration of the minutes for the September 2nd, 2025 Board of Commissioners Workshop and September 2nd, 2025 Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. This time, do I, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Somebody say something.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve both those amendments as indicated by the chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number eight, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, at the, at your direction, I'll like to approve the consent agenda except for Article Number Two, which we wanted to vote on separately.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain me reading these into the record?
Oh, yeah, that's probably...
Please. All right, thank you, sir.
Did we miss the budget approval?
We did that first. We did that before all the proclamations.
Oh, we, we, okay. How did we get that? These are the amendments for the incumbents.
Yes, ma'am. Item number one, Consider Approval of the Second Reading of the Budget Amendments for the Fiscal Year 25 Incumbrances. Item number two, Second Reading, Division One, Laws of Local Application, Part Two, Board of Commissioners, Chapter One, General Provisions. Number three, Second Reading and Ordinance for Rezonings of Zero High Falls Road, Allen R Mobley, Montana Property Group LLC, Zero High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, located in Land Lot 209 of the Second Land District, Parcel Number 12101008, and 115 Alicia Circle, Allen R Mobley, Montana Property Group LLC, 115 Alicia Circle, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, located in Land Lot 208 of the Second Land District, Parcel Number 12002016. Second Reading and Ordinance for Rezonings for 2825 AKB Parkway, High Falls LLC, 2825 AKB Parkway, Griffin, Georgia, 30, sorry, 30223, located in Land Lot Zero, the Third Land District, Parcel Number 21802005D, and Zero Tomachichi Road, High Falls LLC, Zero Tomachichi Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, located in Land Lot 80 of the Third Land District, Parcel Number 21802006E. Number five, Second Reading and Ordinance for Rezoning for Seven Crouch Road, Newton Crouch at Owl, Seven Crouch Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, located in Land Lot 244 of the Second Land District, Parcel Number 22101035. Number six, Second Reading and Ordinance for Rezoning for 212 Manly Road, Manly Road Investment Group LLC, 212 Manly Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, located in Land Lot 103 of the Third Land District, Parcel Number 242A01005. Number seven, Second Reading and Ordinance for Rezonings for 2890 Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, High Falls 16 LLC, 2890 Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, located in Land Lot 80 of the Third Land District, Parcel Number 21802004, and 2912 Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, High Falls 16 LLC, at 2912 Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, located in Land Lot 81 of the Third Land District, Parcel Number 21802001A, and 2932 Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, High Falls 16 LLC, located at 2932 Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, located in Land Lot 81 of the Third Land District, Parcel Number 21802001B, and Zero High Falls Road, High Falls 16 LLC, Zero High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, located in Land Lot 79 and 80 of the Third Land District, a portion of Parcel Number 21802010, consisting of 11.59 acres.
Thank you, Dr. Ledbetter. I understand we want to pull number two out?
How do we know which number two is? I don't really see that.
Number two would be the Second Reading, Division One, Laws of Local Application, Part Two, Board of Commissioners, Chapter One, General Provisions.
This is the one for compensation for, that I'm opposed to.
Okay, so, okay, that's fine. I just, because I didn't see it on here, so I'm struggling over here, trying to look on my iPad.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I didn't have any problems with any of those. None of those were special exceptions, were they?
No, ma'am. You've already approved them under first reading. This is the second reading for this parcel zoning.
This just changes into the...
I was just trying to listen for if any of the, any of that was a special exception.
That's, that's what my understanding... These are all under second readings, and we have our zoning attorney sitting in the audience for any questions that you have.
Okay, so I made a motion to...
I understand that they're second reading.
To approve them all, except for number two.
Okay, go ahead.
James, go ahead.
I made the motion to approve them all, except for number two.
And I seconded it.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, if they're all approved. Number, item number two. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm, continue to be, this is the fourth time I've voted against this, is the idea of us being able to select our pay. I understand everybody's position on it. It's just something that is countered in the way I believe. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All those opposed, one. Motion carries.
Again, just for discussion, we're hoping that the state is going to take this power from us next year. We wanted them to do that this year, so that we didn't have to do this. But they, they didn't, I don't know if they didn't act on it, or they just ran out of time. We're hoping, again, that they'll, they'll take this, and it'll become a state issue and not something, this, I don't think it should be something that's in our hands. We shouldn't be able to vote on the sheriff's pay. We shouldn't, we should not control the pay of elected officials. That should be a state thing. We've sent that to them to hopefully take it out of our hands, so.
Thank you. Item number nine, new business. Next on the agenda is to consider the out-of-state motor coach request. At this time, I would enter, oh.
Where are we going?
Good evening. As is, uh, required by the current policy of Spalding County, I'm bringing before you a request from the Spalding Senior Nutrition Program for their annual Christmas trip. They would like to go to Pelzer, South Carolina, and this requires an out-of-state travel approval by you.
What's, what's there to do in Pelzer, South Carolina?
Uh, honky-tonk, Christmas, and light people. You'll want to look that one up.
Light people, okay.
I was thinking.
I have a motion and a second, and just to make sure the public understands, this is a zero-sum game to us in the end.
Yeah.
The people who are going on this trip pay for not only the, uh, stuff that they're going to do there, they pay for the cost for the usage of the, uh, motor coach and the driver and everything else. So it ends up being zero-sum for us, including, um, sinking fund money.
Right. That's what I was about to ask.
Yeah.
That is coming back to you in a request with a schedule. Uh, the cost per mile for the sinking fund is twelve dollars per mile for the vehicle. That includes everything that, uh, that we put together, uh, and we will bring that back.
Not per person, but.
Twelve dollars a mile.
Okay, I was like, well, that's going to be really big, but if you got to divide it by the.
Fifty-two. That's correct.
That's not bad.
Okay, I ha, I think I have a motion and I have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Five-zero motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, next on the agenda this evening is for the board to consider approval of consideration of streetlight district for Chas Crestwick subdivision two. Would you like to, David, would you like to give us a, some words on this, please?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Phase Two is not built out yet. Uh, has several homes on there, but, uh, it's not built out, so now's the time to start the, um, streetlight district for that. It'll involve five new poles for Phase Two, cost of twenty-four dollars per light per month. Uh, so we have all the paperwork and the staff report here to the petition and the breakdown of the cost. Just need to get it approved so we can move forward with the agreement.
Okay, this is once again a zero-sum game for the county. The people who live on this street, uh, end up paying the entire cost for the lights, the poles, the maintenance, and all this other stuff. Uh, we just simply take it, put it in, put it back out as a ta, on their tax bor, uh, tax sheet, and then, uh, we take the money back in to pay the electrical people.
We had our streetlight audit recently, and we, we seen some areas where we need to follow back up on some older ones, but you've had, this one in Holiday Pass Phase Two is new ones for this year, so.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Discussion.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Wind.
So how, going forward, how are we going to reconcile those individuals who were paying six dollars for their lights twenty-five years ago, and they've been paying six dollars for the whole time they've lived there, with what it actually costs for that today? I, I don't recall that we came up, we, we talked about what the problems were. Did we ever say how we were going to be able to sustain keeping that up to date?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so each year staff has in their process flow, uh, reconciliation at the time of audit for how much the bill cost the previous year, and we will adjust the fee schedule for all of our streetlight districts effective January fir, first each year when we update our, our fee schedule.
So, so is that a policy?
That's what we're bringing to you as a policy discussion, uh, with the understanding that the process flow for how we will monitor the streetlights is a part of that process flow and policy as well, and we will bring all of that to you for consideration.
Okay, that's, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five-zero motion carries. Uh, this was a great work, so, so everybody knows, on the county, uh, staffs to find out, go back through and find these issue, uh, so that, uh, we're getting all the money and not eating any of it ourselves. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, for the board to consider a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse for the purchase of Spalding County Sheriff's Office vehicles. Hello, wonderful sheriff.
Uh, what we're doing is we're trying to get ahead of the curve right here, uh, with the purchase of these vehicles. Uh, if we wait until we normally do, uh, it would be March usually until we had the vehicles outfitted and on the road. Uh, this is the same thing that we did last year, I believe the year before last, and, uh, it's the exact same request for vehicles this year to go ahead and do a purchase of them.
Staff recommends approval?
Staff recommends approval, um, and just, I want to give kudos to our sheriff for the way that he is saving our community money for these purchases.
Yes, sir. Over the, um, over the last two years, by various means, we have been able to purchase, uh, thirty-eight vehicles, uh, without any extra burden on the taxpayers, uh, including, uh, three ATBs for, uh, Spalding County Fire and for Public Works, uh, through various means, through, uh, various sources.
Way to go, way to go, sheriff.
We have almost completely flipped our, uh, Uniform Patrol Division, uh, into new cars that are all under warranty. We've been, uh, been able to hire our own mechanic now to do vehicle maintenance and bodywork, uh, that saves us even more money, saves us a lot on, uh, manpower hours and, uh, fees.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Wind.
So I don't recall us doing a resolution for this last year.
We, we have to do a resolution every time we do a purchase through the ACCG, um, program. Uh, the way that that system works, they require us to do a resolution at every purchase, so any block purchases are great for them because we can put these thirty-eight vehicles into one purchase resolution instead of doing one resolution at a time. The bank requires it, um, otherwise they will not provide any funding for, for the vehicles.
So again, I don't recall us having done this last year, is what I'm thinking.
We've done it three or four times already.
Yes, ma'am. We have.
We've done it as a group.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I think that it's a great idea because you have to replace, you have to plan to replace your vehicles, and it's better than to have all of them.
It takes time to do all of that.
Okay, go ahead.
I, Sheriff, I've been talking you up. I've had several speaking, uh, engagements lately, and every time I get to say, we've got a great sheriff in Spalding County, and I just want to let you know how proud I am, that I get to say that.
It's a, it's a great, it's a great agency out there full of a lot of really good, hard-working people, and they do a great job.
It, it, a, a lot, I get to see, and it's sort of my job to scrutinize y'all's hard work, and, um, when it, when it's done right, I don't have to look at the agency. I know that it's Spalding County, and that's, that's something I'm proud of. Um, um, I, I know that we, with animal control, we're looking to, um, get, um, reimbursement's the wrong word, restitution, that's the word I'm looking for, for the cost of having to take in animals and this kind of stuff with these criminal charges. Um, I, and again, we're not talking about any specific, because obviously I would never, but, uh, and it's weird for a defense attorney to say, but this is just something that, as a defense attorney, I've noticed that even if there's a, a pit maneuver or something, and there's damage on these vehicles, I, I've never seen restitution for it, like.
It's, it's.
You could definitely ask for that.
The damage that we have to our vehicles because of the push bumpers on it is usually very minor because of the way our people train. Uh, a lot of it is just realigning the bumper, maybe doing a little bit of buffing, and that's about it. It, the push bumpers stop the intrusion into the, the fenders and the radiators and everything, so there's really very little work to be done with that.
Not, not to, again, as a defense attorney, it's totally fine if, uh, but, but that's, I, I've seen other agencies tack that on, and, and, and there's never been any pushback from the defendant, so.
May have to talk to the, to the judges.
Just throwing, just throwing that out there. Not, not to betray my fellow, uh, members of the bar, but just, uh.
Thank you.
I get to wear both hats, so.
And we appreciate that. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five-zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Sir.
At this time, we would like to hear from code enforcement officer regarding properties that are being, uh, actively worked.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity, uh, to provide you an update on these two properties, probably the two, uh, most called upon and worst properties we have.
Yes.
Uh, in the county. The first being Bleachery Street Mill. Uh, this case was opened in September of last year. Um, did some research into the property, found it belonging to, uh, on Q Public showing as Mills J S, uh, Act LLC as the property owner. Notification was sent to the property owner, and I did, uh, shortly after, receive a phone call from a representative of that LLC advising me that the property had been split. Uh, Q Public was not showing that at that time. So I was not able to identify anything else, uh, at that time as far as the property, but, uh, I did advise that company that they were still responsible for the cleanup of their parcel that they had purchased. Uh, at this point, no attempts, uh, to resolve the violations, uh, identified in the courtesy notice, uh, have been made.
Have we done like a title search? You know what I'm saying? Like, have we done like an actual, like?
We, we have at this point done title search.
Yes, Ms. Wyndham has, has been working on that.
Um, in January of this year, again, more concerns came out about homeless people at the location, the, uh, Mill. Uh, along with the sheriff's office and I, um, in my department, we went through and identified some of those people that were trespassed from the property. Uh, we have continued working that, and at that time, it was, uh, on Q Public showing the two parcels, identified as three forty-nine and three fifty-five Railroad Avenue. Uh, throughout the month of, uh, of January, we've, we worked on, uh, trying to clear the homeless people out of there and trespass as many as we could. Uh, during that month, it was determined that a Connor Bushon, uh, was claimed to be the owner of the building at three forty-nine, and he had it listed with Southern Realty Group, uh, here in Griffin for sale. We did some work with them to identify and, and confirm that he was the owner. Um, however, Southern Realty Group advised that they also were having issues with the owner, and they were no longer going to list the property, so it is now sitting unlisted. Uh, in February of, uh, this year, notice of violation was sent to Mr. Connor Bushon, uh, regarding three forty-nine Railroad Avenue by Mel, and to this point, no, uh, no response has been received. Uh, in July, you guys on the board declared it a public nuisance property, and I started working with Ms. Wyndham to start the process of, uh, the county being able to gain access to clean up the property and tear the building down. Um, Ms. Wyndham and I, uh, she, we've been in communication. She advised me that she needed all of my photographs, case notes, which were provided to her. Uh, at that time, she also requested some aerial photographs, so in cooperation with the Spalding County Sheriff's Office, we have at this point gotten those, and those were released to Ms. Wyndham on September tenth, and we are currently waiting any additional, uh, requests for materials or photographs from her.
If you haven't been by this place, this is eyesore, big-time eyesore, and I'm surprised it's not a safety, uh, issue of some sort or health issue of some sort. Everybody pretty well understands where this is and what it looks like, I hope. Okay? Uh, anything else on that?
Yes, it's, it's, it's really bad to say what you said, but you don't live there, okay? It's worse than that.
Whoops.
It's worse than that, and I'm, I'm, I'm just at the place where if we started this September of twenty-four, and it's September twenty-five, it's time for a line to be drawn.
Yeah, fines need to be stacking up.
I mean.
That, that's why we're here. That, yes, so.
It, it's, it's not without heart. We don't, uh, you know, we're doing a lot that, a lot more, uh, uh, per capita here in Spalding County for homelessness than, than other counties are frankly. We're a tiny county, and we're doing, uh, quite a bit compared to, um, you know, again, the per capita, you know what I'm saying, that other counties do. Um, but if you don't get A, B, C, D, all the way to Z for a homeless person, if you don't shepherd them all the way through, get them back on their, you know, you just do one part of it, there, it, it, it is bound to fail. It's ninety, ninety-five percent failure rate unless you get all the stuff. And obviously, Spalding County doesn't have the funds to provide every step of that way. Um, in the meantime, while we're trying to get more resources and help those people from A all the way to Z, um, I mean, there, there is still the reality of those that live here and don't want to see buildings broken into and don't want to see fires started in those buildings, uh, don't want to see, you know, trash on the street, uh, you know? So if, if there weren't all those issues, obviously, um, I, I, I think, I think it would be easier to deal with the homelessness. However, at the end of the day, um, our society is one wherein we should, we should look to help our neighbors, including those that aren't even from here, that we don't know. The least of these are brethren, as it says in the Bible. That said, it, it's really, really, really expensive, so Spalding County is doing what we can, and we hope to do more, but it's not without compassion that we're trying to deal with these issues, especially when it comes to homelessness. But, um, you know, at the end of the day, we, you know, we're, we're not trying to be rude, but th, there, there are some rules.
Mr. Chairman, this, the problem out, out at that, at that particular location is, is the, three forty-nine is the problem with the homeless people. Three forty-nine Railroad is the building that has two huge rotten trees in front of it and a caving-in building. But the furniture, rooms full of furniture, tires, old cars.
That's just being dumped.
The people who live in that neighborhood are not taking the furniture out of their house and dumping it a half mile from where they live. Okay, that, that, you know, and the people that are living over there are not getting rid of rooms full of furnitures at a time. So, so I, you know, what we have done didn't work. We didn't catch a single person from dumping. We didn't get a tag number, so, so that didn't work. And, and while I, I get it, we have a process.
Mr. Chair, with.
My phone calls are, if this was Sun City, they wouldn't be sitting over here.
Mr. Chair, with the board's approval, we will, uh, we will move heaven and earth to get this property cleaned up. Um, we will expend the money that's needed in order to work with, uh, Becca and Murray to make sure that we take every legal path possible to get this property cleaned up with your approval.
Yes. All right.
The total blame is on Bushon. I don't know who this Bushon character is you, you brought up, and he, he used to pay for it. And I'd look, I'd look him up on the registry if he owns any other properties in the county. I guarantee you they're the same way. They're just being overlooked.
And, and every dime that we spend, we need, we need restitution for, every single dime.
I mean, all this work that they're doing just to have to do that, you know? So, yeah. Okay, I'm finished being indignant.
No, no, uh, we, that's, that's the reason this is here, to make sure we all understand how bad this is. All right, let's go to the, next one.
Okay, next location is the Sunnyside Mobile Home Park, located at three, uh, thirty-eight ninety-three North Expressway, uh, in Sunnyside. Uh, this case also was opened in September of last year. Um, identified through Q Public, the owner is a Sunnyside and Smiles LLC. Uh, search of the Georgia Secretary of State website showed the LLC was administrat, administratively dissolved in October of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, did some more, uh, research into the LLC and was able to identify a Philip Asuama as the owner of that LLC at the time that it was in existence. Uh, using this name and some additional resources we have, we were able to identify several addresses around the metropolitan Atlanta area uh, where Mr. Asuama could possibly reside. We made several attempts to make contact with him, uh, all without success. At that time, I went to the, uh, Property Tax Office to check on, uh, the status of the tax, property taxes. I was advised that the taxes were current and had been paid in full by a Rena Wood. Uh, I began researching Ms. Wood. I began researching Ms. Wood and deter or got some identifying information for her living in North Atlanta. Contact was made with her in May of twenty twenty-five. Ms. Wood did contact me and advise me she had owned or financed the property to Mr. Asuma and would have to go through the legal process to get ownership back because he had faulted on the payments and had disappeared on her. She has gone through some medical concerns with her spouse over the last several months. I did have contact with her on August sixth. And she said that due to that, she had not been as aggressive as she should have, but she would get back on it with her attorneys to try to gain possession of the property back. I advised Ms. Wood that I would follow up on this within a few weeks to see what the status was. She is clear that the structure is trash, overgrowth, and any other possible violations at this location must be resolved as soon as she does get ownership back. On Friday, I met with Dr. Ledbetter and we discussed also turning this case over to Ms. Wyndham to pursue remedies.
Yeah, that I it was so overgrown that I didn't even realize that there were four mobile home, old mobile homes there. It's directly on the highway. I hope we don't, and I'm I'm not trying to be ugly, but talking Ms. Wood, Ms. Wood has no legal standing right now, am I correct?
Well, I was actually just looking, Commissioner, to see if if she may have an interest in the property, if she is a lien holder. So while she doesn't necessarily have possession of the property, she does have an interest in the property. And that is, she is worth talking to to figure out some context here, what's going on.
So when you say interest in the property, you mean fiduciary interest, financial interest?
She has a financial, she well, she has a security interest in the property if she has seller finance and there's a recorded security deed.
Okay.
So as a lien holder, she would have a self-interest in wanting the property to be cleaned up. But she does not have possession of the property, that is correct.
So so, yeah, that could be forever. I'm I'm just being real, it's been since twenty twenty-two. I'm just not prepared, and like I said, I'm not trying to be, I'm not prepared for us to dance around with this with with her and how and him or whoever it is, we just need to do what we need to do and we need to clean it up. And if they want to figure out what they want to do later and come back and pay us and and get it back, fine, but it's it's screwing up the whole entryway into the county.
Yes, it is.
Find them, get restitution.
To that end, Commissioner Flowers Taylor, sorry. The process for that, as a lien holder, Ms. Wood would be entitled to notice of these proceedings. So it's good that we have made contact with her because again, she would be also notified of the proceedings.
I'm I'm very happy and happy to see all of the work that's been done on this. And as I said, the end game for us is restitution and having a clean place for people to see in a presentable entryway into our county on nineteen forty-one. So, you know, we just we just need to make it happen.
Yeah, the reason we brought this forth is to make sure you understand, Luke is working hard, but he's not getting anywhere. And it's this is long time business and it takes a long time to be able to do it. So Luke, we thank you, keep doing it, we we are not giving up on you doing it, I can tell you.
He's doing doing a great job, it's, you know, he can't do anything that we don't let him do.
All right. I I know you're not prepared, but have you done anything with the two houses when you turn off on Vineyard off of nineteen forty-one? Going and they're they're running like a can of chop?
Two oh five has been cited, he failed to appear in court, so I'm in communication with the warrant division
Lock him up.
To get him into court. And the property beside it, we have sent notice to them, to the owner of that property to rehab or demolish the structure by, if I recall correctly, the end of October.
Thank you. All right, anything else? This is just information, okay?
Thank you, thank you so much.
David, I saw you step forward, did you have a comment you wanted?
From for the second one, on North Expressway, the one of the good things we could possibly use in the future too is its own C one highway commercial, it's also in the North Expressway Improvement District. So really, it's a non-conforming use because it's zoned that way. So this not being a functional mobile home park anymore, that's something we could make sure it never is a mobile home park again if it goes past that twelve month period of no activity whatsoever. So we can definitely look into that. Doesn't necessarily get it cleaned up any faster, but it can make sure we close the door on it being a mobile home park in the future, we're good, so.
In a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, both of you, we got to keep working this, this is.
Thank you.
Item number five, last under new business this evening is for us to consider a request for reconciliation of leasing revenues owed to the Spalding County Water and Sewerage Facilities Authority regarding the Williamson Road Communication Tower. Dr. Ledbetter.
So I provided a letter for the commissioners to review with respect to this contract. It was signed back in July twenty fourteen between Spalding County and the Verizon Wireless of the East LP, which is a Delaware limited partnership. The agreement established an initial rental rate of twenty-five hundred dollars a month for this communication tower with an annual increase of two and a half percent applied each year thereafter. As of twenty twenty-five, the cumulative revenue received from this this lease was three hundred seventy thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. The board, at the time the lease was signed, did allocate a portion of these funds to be provided to the water authority. At the end of August, that water allocation was a hundred and eleven thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Through extensive review by our finance department, it does not appear that any of these funds have been allocated toward the water authority. And they are now asking for the county to provide those funds to them and set aside an account for their portion or thirty percent of those funds that we receive on a monthly basis from Verizon Wireless of the East LP to them. That thirty percent would be placed in that fund each month moving forward.
Why why is it split with the water authority?
Because the water tower is where they put the first eight hundred megahertz antenna.
Oh, it's on top of water tower?
It's on our part, on the water authority property.
Yeah, that checks out.
We, bottom line for me, we owe them this money, we just haven't been given it to them. Yeah, 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 and we'll we'll provide it from now forward. It was a good, all right, do I have motion to approve?
Do we?
Okay.
So so we're holding a hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we owe to them that we have to cut them a check for, is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they did a good thing blocking off the number of years to be able to do it.
It's my understanding that this is not a block at all, this is for the entire period.
Gwen, didn't didn't they say?
I think we'll, they're they wanted to negotiate something. But but I think just bringing it to the board to let them be aware of.
We owe that amount of money, anything that you can do with it, all right.
I I want to make a motion, but it has something to do with discussion. So I make a motion to approve reimbursing the water authority hundred and eleven thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents for the fee to put our eight hundred megahertz antenna on their property.
Would that motion also include the thirty percent each month?
Yes, and to create an account to to pay them for for rent of that space.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Yes, sir, so my understanding when we got all of the radio towers, just like we're paying them rent, is that somebody was supposed to be paying us rent on the other towers. And we never really talk about whether or not that's happening, and I don't know that as a fact, we've gone out and solicited to to anyone for that. But I guess I'm I'm disappointed how that worked. And I know that we put, I think we put up an additional tower since the original eight hundred megahertz system went in. But we have not been able to generate the income that the board of commissioners anticipated we would do. You know, I know, you know, you're not the marketing guy, but but that was what was said, but nobody's worked that piece. And so clearly it works since we owe a hundred and eleven thousand dollars to somebody else for letting us put our tower there. So so I think that, you know, at some point, we need to look at that, that is a revenue stream that we are completely missing. And this is just an aside, I was looking at the leisure services budget and saw where they pay for internet service for Ambux Park and for maybe Tyus Park, some some other place that wasn't like close in. And I'm like, then we put free internet out with some COVID money? I just want us to go back and discuss that because I think.
No, it was pre-COVID, it was above, it was on some of the tall towers, but it wasn't everywhere, but it was.
But but I'm saying, we 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 thought we were wrapping a perimeter. So so I'm like, if we wrap the perimeter, why wouldn't we wrap our own self in the perimeter and give our own self free internet that we're giving to everybody else who's close to it? So, Mr. Chairman, workshop it. I I'm just saying, we're 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 out constantly saying we don't have the ability to create revenue, but we have revenue streams that we are not tapping into.
Good point, great point.
Yeah, that was a thing that kind of went nowhere.
Okay, that was all my discussion.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. At this time, we'll start with the report from the county manager.
Mr. Chair, in light of the hour, I will make my remarks brief. I just want to let everyone know that the work on Jackson Road by E. R. Snell is almost complete. If you have not had the chance to travel that roadway, I would encourage you to do so. Just be extraordinarily careful because people have, I believe, realized that the road is in great shape and the speeds have increased substantially. There is also, as you have voted, going to be a three-way stop sign at Jackson and Locust Grove. That stop sign will be covered for the first two weeks. There will be signage placed out, the digital signs will be placed out indicating that the stop signs will become effective very soon. And if you have not seen that intersection, I would encourage you to go by and see that intersection as well because it has gone through a complete redesign for safety purposes. Very proud of the team for the work that they've done out in that area. And we're drawing to a close for the work on county property, our county roads for this year for T-Splas. And I'm happy to report that we came in on or under budget and on or before time that we allocated for that process. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Another great job there. All right, deputy county manager?
Yes, sir, I'll be really brief, I just wanted to give you guys an update on the animal shelter. As of today, they are caring for a total of a hundred and forty-five animals, which includes ninety-nine dogs and puppies and forty-six cats and kittens. This includes eighty-three dogs, sixteen puppies, twenty-three cats, twenty-three kittens, and three fish.
And a pig.
No, the pig is not on, yeah, no, the pig was not mentioned. Yeah, no pig this week. Currently, none are in foster care and four animals are at Pet Sense at the Adoption Center. They are managing fifteen dogs with criminal trials and fourteen animals are under veterinary care, which includes a mom and seven kittens. They have twenty-four dogs on their pickup list, they've inserted fifty-three microchips to help unite pets with their families. And then they are preparing to transport fifteen animals to the Atlanta Humane Society at the end of the month. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Deputy, I want to ask a question about, I understand that last Friday, state came down and did an inspect, on it last Friday, came down and did an inspection as a result of some comments that were provided by our citizens. How did that come out?
Yes, sir, that is correct, everything, the animal shelter passed, all the inspection came out, everything was a hundred percent. All the shelter, all the cages were clean, the floors were spotless, there was no issues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
It's almost like animal patrol is doing a good job, it's unbelievable.
All right, Commissioner Watts?
Yes, I got to give a real big shout out to the organizer of the class reunion this weekend, it was excellent. I'm talking about probably a thousand people was out there, everybody was showing love, respect. I just love to see our community when it's like that, I mean, I was just so excited. And the second thing I want to say is with the animal control, I did go out and visit Ms. Vicky and we do need to get Ms. Vicky some more help, we got to get Ms. Vicky some help. She was sick and I'm talking about, and still trying, so we got to.
Commissioner Watts, she should have two new employees starting this week.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Made a good deputy. Okay, I was going to talk about animal control too. This these groups, again, have tried to throw something against the wall that didn't stick, used a bunch of unsubstantial complaints and everything and it's all, and we can learn from what happened last week, it's all attacking one person. I mean, we got bigger problems in this country than to worry about what we got going on at our animal control that's been checked out by the state twice in under a month and a half and passed both times. So I just want to say get life and let let us do our job up here. And because obviously, Vicky and the staff at Animal Control is doing it right, go go somewhere else and bother another county. There's there's other, like I said, we got bigger fish to fry with our suicides and just learning how to love one another and work things out. This like Friday of last week, I was so disheartened. And it started off with a girl getting stabbed on the train. That right there, just I I seen my little sister, I seen my nieces in that position and it just just ate me up. And then later that afternoon, the assassination, it just all just together, I mean, I I'm almost, don't even want to be here anymore. I'm almost wanting to just go somewhere, go back down to my little happy place in Costa Rica. But it's just, it's sad and just everybody pray, just pray for our country and each other. And it ain't no red, yellow, black, and white, we're all one person.
Please continue to stay with us. All right, Commissioner Flowers Taylor?
I was very glad to hear the update on what's going on at over at the Old Springs Mill and glad to hear that you're also, Luke is also looking at that three forty-nine building where where the the homeless traffic is. Part of almost everything that Commissioner Dunn said about the homeless situation is true. But if we allow buildings to be left abandoned and open, we create an opportunity for crime to happen. So we have to do a better job, not only our 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 county people, but somehow able to engage the community so they can let us know that there's something wrong, that that someone's going into this house at night or whatever. So I was really glad to hear about that. I'm I'm very concerned that we don't have a succession plan for the director at Animal Control. Not that she's trying to go anywhere, but any of us could be sick tomorrow. And okay, we already getting beat up and we got somebody who know what they doing. What are we going to do if she is not here, she's sick or her family's sick?
Good point.
This is not like, let's think about it, this is this is a big deal where we can get in trouble or we need consistency. So and and for me, it's been, that's been part of the problem all along. Each time we've switched directors, we've had this impasse period that we just kind of sunk a little bit lower and followed a few less ordinances and, you know, so I think that is definitely something we need to look at and talk about. The other thing is the discussion that we had at Leisure Services about the splash pads. And part, and it may be coming to us as a recommendation, but we it's, they've given us the place where they want to put it in city park. I I would love for us to be able to get a verification from the city of Griffin. I don't care if they're planning on building a pool in ten years, we need to know where it's going to be. Because I think it's important for us that we don't want to try to have a facility where people are paying right next to a facility where we letting folks get wet for free. And then over here, you got to get paid to get wet. So so I know they say it's not, they're saying that whatever they build is not going to be directly in the park and I'm assuming that's the part of the park that we're responsible for right now. and I'm assuming that's the part of the park that we're responsible for right now. Um, but I, I, I think we, there needs to be some communication between us so that we can, you know, get TJ rocking with this. Because as long as they're kind of up in the air, we're not really sure which way to move. And I think we were expecting this thing to be ready to be up by the next time it gets warm. So, you know, possibly if we can just at, send them a letter asking for direction on which way they're going so that we can solidify where we're gonna put the splash pad. Um, so that, so that TJ can get an idea on where he needs to do, how he can plan the work and then start getting some bids out. The other thing that I wanted to say was regarding the Animal Control. We have a, we have an epidemic here with, with people not giving a crap about their animals and just, you know, dumping them. And I feel like we're not, we're not looking at this problem at three hundred and sixty degrees. Yes, a symptom of the problem is dogs and cats being born and, and abandoned. But the problem is that they're having babies and people are allowing them to have babies. And we have a spay-neuter ordinance. We have a county-wide spay-neuter ordinance. And whereas in the past, we have been reactive and our ordinance has, you know, our policy has clearly been, we're not coming out to your house messing with you unless somebody called and reports you. We need to start paying attention. Cause it's, you know, and I'm not, I don't know what that looks like, workshop. But clearly we have some communities where people can't afford to have pets and they're allowing their pets to continue to have pets. We need to, we need to have a county, county-wide spay and neuter program. We need to go into these communities where they're picking up the most animals and do something to, to, and then we need to go door to door. You got a dog? Where's their papers? Because this is the only way we're gonna be able to get some grasp on this. If we don't, you know, those numbers should look like sixty and seventy, not, not a hundred and forty animals on a daily basis. So, we gotta do something, and I'm not saying I have to answer. I'm just saying that it has to be a multifaceted plan, not just addressing Vicky and them spaying and neutering animals, but we need to keep them from com- making it into the shelter in the first place. So, we need to fix those animals that are out, that people are just letting have pets. Okay, that's enough.
Hi, Chair.
Um, I still think that we should add some slides or kids' stuff to the Aquatic Center. Uh, when we were looking at the plans, uh, like the architectural plans, uh, my family went up to Greensville to look at some of the stuff that they had and some of the, uh, they've got a, it's not YMCA, I want, want to say it's actually a, it must be their YMCA, that has a kind of the same thing. It's like two pools in, like, two different rooms. And their um, like, activity pool has a set of stairs on the wall that you slide, you go, there's a slide there and you go out of the building and then come back in. And it's, it's pretty neat. And they don't, you don't have to have a lifeguard on or anything because there's a lifeguard on the pool and it goes out, spins around, and comes you back, you know? And, you know, those slides aren't free, but it's not, you know, it's not the cost of whitewater. Um, I think that would also bring in a lot more, you know, paying customers from outside. Um, you know, not that I want to close a High Falls water slide, my kids like that, but um, we could bring something, you know, pretty close to that right here, we've got the facility for it. Um, that, something that was mentioned tonight that I, maybe I just haven't picked up on before, uh, railroad equipment tax? I don't know, we could tax the railroads. I, I want, I'd like to know what that is. I've ne- I'd never heard of a railroad equipment tax. Well, that's later, I mean, you don't need to do it tonight. Um, we've had a, we've had a lot of deaths this last week. Uh, Bobby Cox died today. Um, we had, um, you know, some real um influential people, uh, both who influenced me when I was a kid, like Bobby Cox, and uh, yeah, influenced me as an adult. Um, and people that we didn't know. Um, and I'll, I'll say briefly what I said at the uh Patriot State Memorial on nine eleven. Uh, people ask, you know, what solution is government gonna, gonna provide? And government is, has never been the solution to any problem. Um, but the solution to all of our problems is Jesus, period. No other solution will save any of us. This life is that short, even if it lasts seventy, eighty years, ninety years, it's this short compared to the eternity that we lived before with our heavenly Father and the eternity that we're gonna live after this life with Him. This is our time to get right with Him, period. And nothing else compares to that importance. So, um, I, I know that this country was founded because God wanted it to be. There's no reason other than that that we could have possibly won the Revolutionary War, that we could have possibly won the War of eighteen twelve, period. Without God's direct divine intervention, we are not a country. And I know that as long as we turn to Him and worship Him and follow Him, we will be blessed. And if we do not do so, He will remove those blessings and we will no longer be a country, period. I urge everyone, find a church, attend a church, pray often, do what God would have you to do and live closer. I, I, I know that, you know, some people might not like that a, elected official gets up here and says that and they can choose not to vote for me if they want to. But at the end of the day, Jesus is our only hope, period. And that's, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Uh, so everybody gathers, I'm pushing on the suicide as hard as I can. Losing a person, a citizen of ours, wo- once a week or twice a week is just unacceptable to me. We need everybody to get involved and be checking your friends, checking each other, uh, thinking about how can we do something about it. Um, I want to say, uh, I thought we had a, yeah, uh, this month is uh National Recovery Month for those people that are in recovery. Uh, yesterday, we had a bus tour come in. Uh, it's going to almost every city in the state. And uh, we had a great showing, um, twice as many people, just about as any other uh city has had. Uh, it was well worth going out and seeing and listening to the stories that people had. Um, and I watched uh what I think is a celebration uh come from the historical uh city hall and come walking right over and get involved with uh what they, we heard. There wasn't a group there that's in, taking care of recovery that wasn't, wasn't aware of what was going on with our suicides. Um, great fair. If you didn't get there, I'm sorry, it was a great time out at the fair. Uh, the, if you looked at the little kids, uh, to them, it was just like Christmas. They couldn't hardly go fast enough and get on a, get on a ride and come back and get on another ride. And uh, they were ready to go all day and all night to be able to get that done. Uh, I'll be gone for the uh, uh, next public zoning hearing. Uh, if you're not gonna be here, uh, because I'm gonna be gone, we need to know that uh, to make sure that we have a quorum to be able to do it. Um, I can buzz in, I can zoom in if we have a quorum, do something, but I can't, if we don't. Um, all right, uh, that's, uh, I want to say what a great job the song is. Uh, it is absolutely sensational. If you paid attention to it, you heard Orchard Hill, you heard Sutton City, you heard the city. Stuff that applies to us. Uh, those of you that weren't here when uh, uh, Dr. Ledbetter had a session on strategic planning and the word came out, uh, I am the I in Spaulding. Uh, it is uh happened back then and it is uh what we are about. There's two I's, uh, truly. It's the people who are working uh in government and the people who are working uh in Spal- uh, citizens in Spaulding, taking care of Spaulding to be able to do it. Uh, we'll see more of it, it's a huge step. And I want to thank uh Dr. Burks and uh Dr. For what she has, they put together, copyrighted and everything else. But today was the first time we showed it publicly and uh I thought it was great, uh, so I can't say enough about it. All right, uh, checking, David, anything from you?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chair.
Anything else from you, ma'am?
The only thing I wanted to say that when we do place this information out on the website, it would be a better sound. Uh, and we'll also begin to talk about the vision, you know, keeping in step with, I am the I, and I'm the I in Spaulding, but we're the eyes that watch as well. So, we'll begin to have a lot more things coming out and we'll present to you all. We have also a magazine that we're working on internally towards a county lens. So, we're gonna play on focusing on all of that, but hopefully I'll be able to present everything.
Well, you're knocking it out of the park. Uh, for those uh commissioners, uh, if you haven't had a listening session in your area, you have got to talk to Dr. Burks about wanting it in your area to be able to do it and she'll set it up, but you've got to do something about it. You just can't rely on her to set it all up for you, uh, if you have a place and stuff like that. All right. Um, I will now enter, we will now enter into executive session for the purpose of, can, just one sec, conduct an executive session for the purpose of consulting with the county attorney regarding pending and potential litigation as per- uh permitted by OCGA fifty fourteen three B one A, where public discussion could adversely affect the county's position. Do I have a motion?
Th- this is for real estate or?
Litigation, pending litigation.
Uh, motion to go on executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, we will come back out and finish the uh Board of Commissioners for this-
All those in favor, please signify by a rate four zero. We're out of the executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor? We're adjourned.